I call this meeting to order.
Thank you, Mayor Hazel. This is Hazel, what's his last name? Spears? This is Hazel Spears, our mayor for the day. Uh, just real quick, at the very end is Councilman Cox. Councilman Feaster, our deputy mayor pro temp Fierenza, Councilman Nelson, this is our city manager, Mr. And that's.
Been gone that long?
Do we need to have like a?
Hey, just call me Joe. First, this is Mayor Pro Temp Kicksmiller. This is our lawyer, Mr. Lawson. This is our deputy uh, city secretary, Ms. Rex. And then way over there, the beard is, is uh, Mr. Herman, our finance director and assistant city manager. And that's Scott Kristen. He's our director of public work team. This is all of our roads. And then that's our city secretary, Mrs. Miller. That's the fire chief. You met him, Chief Collier. And then behind us is our human resources um, director, Kim. Can't remember your last name either.
It's Lopez.
Lopez, there you go. Marketing director, Lori, Mrs. Um, Lori Mullins.
And this is my dad. And he was in the military.
Really? What branch?
I was in the army.
Oh, Navy, beat Army. You're not mayor for the day anymore. I'm sorry.
Just kidding. Like it on your dad.
Alright, so uh, good evening. Welcome to early work session of the Highland Village City Council. Today is Tuesday, January night. We need to call to order at six, six thirty. At the record show, all council members are present. Welcome back everybody from Christmas and New Year's. Hope everybody had a great holiday. Um, item number one, the agenda is discuss appointing a member to fill a vacancy for an unexpired term on the Board of Ethics. Ms. Rex.
So we've put the three applications in front of you. Um, a board member must be a resident of Highland Village. So one of the members of the Board of Ethics, Mr. Jordan Wooton has resigned due to them moving out of Highland Village. And this has created a vacancy and um, with an unexpired term. So it'll expire on September the thirtieth, twenty twenty four this year. So three applications were sent to you last week and are from residents who are interested in serving on the Board of Ethics. Two of the applications are from the pool of applicants that we received last year for the annual boards and commission appointments in September. One of the two applicants, Leslie Andrews, she was appointed to serve on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board in September. So even though she's currently on a board, she can serve on another city board if you so choose. Um, the other applicant, Debbie Barber, she was not appointed to a board last year. So we contacted both of them and they both expressed interest to serve on the ethics board. So in addition to these two applicants, the city uh, staff, we solicited additional applications. And we received an application from Michael McDaniel, who expressed interest in serving on the Board of Ethics. And so basically, these candidates selected Board of, Board of Ethics as one of their top three choices. So this early work session agenda item gives you an opportunity to discuss an appointment to fill this vacancy. And if you desire to make an appointment, we have got an item on the regular meeting agenda for formal action this evening.
Alright, anybody?
I'll lead off. I think that since Leslie is already on Parks Board, I'd like to bring in someone else. Even though I like Leslie, I like what she could do, but I've got an opportunity. So.
So is there uh, any sort of a leaning one way or? Anybody?
How many times did they meet last year?
Once.
One.
Are we supposed to be reading something? I'm sorry. We're all quiet. We're all quiet. I, I would just put forward Debbie Barber as an option, just for discussion. I know she's, she's applied before for positions and she keeps volunteering, so. That's as deep as my logic is going today. I mean, she's more than capable, so it's not.
Okay, so.
Robert on that.
Okay, so uh, this, it's on an action agenda and if, if we, if we're all pretty okay with that, you know, there is the option if we want to to move that to consent. But if we do that, there will not be anything on the action agenda, so.
I'm okay to move a consent.
I feel bad for the mayor of the day. Surely we can have some.
You never know who's gonna show up to speak, so.
That's true.
There is, there is always that.
Just, just as a reminder that if it is gonna be on consent, just be sure the consent motion includes for a name.
Alright, um, so that kind of the consensus, I suppose. Move on to item number two, which is clarification of consent. Does anybody have anything they need to clarify or any questions or anything on the agenda?
What's the, just what's the timing on item eleven, as far as completion goes?
I believe it's a hundred and twenty days, calendar days is, is allowed in the contract. If we get contracts going within the next month, you know, we can be under construction in February.
Is there any reason that neighbors need to be notified or anything with preference to what we've done before?
We'll put up message boards and notify the HOA so they can get it out in their newsletter.
What's, what's the likelihood of, of that project, the construction of that project coinciding with the work on the traffic light?
It'll be in conjunction with.
So is that just gonna make the traffic all that much more worse or is it really?
No.
Doesn't matter much?
It's just an overlay, so it'll be a milling overlay, um, which is a fairly quick project or a quick um, construction sequence. Painting, uh, pavement markings will be the longest thing with being set up and getting that down. The signal project, um, this signal will still operate. Be like the new signal kind of be, be installed in the background and it'll be covered even when it's energized and so, but this signal will still be functioning.
Okay, alright.
Kind of traffic impact are you anticipating? What time do they start? Are they gonna, have you scheduled them to go after eight hour, eight hour, eight AM?
We haven't talked to them yet, but generally in a high traffic area or school zones, we ask them to be cognizant of the school zone time. And with that intersection here, um, we'll ask them to be, be aware of the community traffic as it leaves.
And I guess I'm, in my mind, I'm trying to get a picture of how this is gonna work. Those are single lanes in both directions. And um, I don't know the, the equipment, does it, will it cover? Do you have to twice it? Two stripes, two, two, two areas of the road?
The width of, the width of the existing pavement, although it's striped as a single lane, it can technically be uh, sectioned off as two, two and a half lanes. So they'll always be.
Always be a line of traffic that they'll, they'll be running. Okay.
How far is the first phase gonna go?
This is actually uh, the phase three of the mobility study. It's kind of going through the Briar Hill intersection. Then um, the phase two is under design phase right now.
Okay.
And that's the Denton County uh, funding assistance. Uh, and that's gonna take the Briar Hill intersection, uh, redo it into, into concrete and take it to Twin Coes intersection. That's anticipated to go to construction probably next year. Anything else? Anybody? If there's nothing else, we can adjourn.
We are adjourned. See you at seven o'clock.
Are you all ready?
Yes.
We're ready on the right.
It is, and they're right on the left.
You ready? Rhonda, are you ready? You want to do the gavel? I call this meeting to order. You got to pound it good.
I call this meeting to order.
Thank you very much. That is our mayor for the day, Hazel Spears. She's a student at Founders Classical Academy. She's our mayor for the day. She just got back from doing her tour. And she said that she liked both police and fire, but probably police because she got stickers. So, fire, maybe you need to up it a little bit. Hand out some stickers or hats or something. I don't know. Let her play the Xbox. So, thank you. Called me the order. Let me get on my script here. This is going to be not the shortest meeting, and if I don't get my act together. Welcome to regular session of the Highland Village City Council. Today is Tuesday, January the 9th, and the meeting is called to order at 7:01 PM. Let the record show all council members are present. Please join Councilmember Cox in leading the prayer and the pledge. Mr. Cox.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather here in this new year to continue to serve you, to serve our city and its people. We give you thanks for the time over the holidays spent with family and friends and time to reset and reflect. I pray for our military, domestic, and abroad, our first responders, and our city employees. Only you know what lies before us in 2024, and we ask that you give us the strength and wisdom to make the decisions on issues that will be brought forward, to represent the city and your people with the utmost integrity. We pray for your grace and your mercy and all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance. Yeah?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas's flag. I pledge allegiance to the city, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
There you go. All right, moving on to mayor and council reports. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0415, city council may report on the following items: expression of thanks, congratulations, or condolences, information about holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders about upcoming city council events, information about community events, and announcements involving imminent threat to public health and safety. Does anybody have anything they want to report?
I have my calendar announcements. Of course. The city is closed on Martin Luther King Holiday, January 15th. However, at 6:00 PM at Lewisville High School Auditorium, the LASD community is celebrating the 31st Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Day event. So, please attend. The Parks and Rec Board meeting is canceled that day as well. January 16th, planning and zoning for anyone interested. January 24th is the DCTA North Texas Mobility Corporation Board meeting. You can go to NTMC.com for more information, and you can watch online. January 25th is the DCTA Board meeting at 10:00. You can go to DCTA.net for information for watching online. The most important one, Ms. Haley might be interested in this. The Highland Village Daddy Daughter Dance is January 26th. The city does not provide tickets, but tell Dad to go online and purchase it, or go to the Duval Center. And that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. And anybody else have anything they want to?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Let me sure I'm on. It is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so, Chief, thank you. We appreciate everything you and your officers do to protect our city. Thank you. And, oh, he's not out there. I was looking for the other officer.
All right, anybody else? I just want to announce real quick. Congratulations to the Briar Hill Middle School eighth grade boys and girls basketball teams. They won their midseason tournament, so they finished first place in the district. So, congratulations Bulldogs. And I wanted to welcome everybody back from a great holiday season, and hope everybody had a good, safe holidays and recharge the batteries. And now I have a proclamation for our mayor for the day. You want to come with me downstairs? Okay, so the pretty blue one is yours, and I'll do this so you can, you can hold it up. Okay, that's for you. You can hold that, and I'll read this. Okay, so your dad can take, or you're videoing? Okay. All right, so proclamation for Hazel Spears. Whereas the city of Highland Village recognizes that our youth are the future leaders of our city, county, state, and nation, and understands the importance of increasing students' knowledge of the operations and complexities of local government. And whereas the city of Highland Village offers a mayor-for-the-day program that aims to foster and encourage leadership in our young students. And whereas Highland Village resident Hazel Spears expressed her desire to serve as a future mayor and wished to experience our mayor-for-the-day program. And whereas Ms. Spears, who is a third grade student at Founders Classical Academy, has been afforded the opportunity to participate today. Now therefore, on behalf of the city council and city staff, I, Daniel Jaworski, Mayor of the city of Highland Village, do hereby congratulate and recognize Hazel Spears as the Highland Village Mayor for the day. Congratulations. Yay. Is she going to take a picture? All right, so we'll come back up. Huh? That's your, that's for your microphone. So, we'll go back up and finish our meeting. Hmm? If you talk. That way everybody on TV can hear you. Mm-hmm? Hmm? Yes, it is. You're just, you're talking quiet. You have to talk louder. Okay. Moving on to item number eight, city manager and staff reports. Mr. Stevens, do you have anything?
Mayor, I've got two things, and then we do have a village report. First, I do want to give some information. Now, Republic Services now has a new local call center, and we do have a new number. That number is 972-316-0789. And we'll be getting this information out on our website, social media, and other city publications. And as a reminder, carts should be placed three feet apart, and any bulk or additional bags should also be placed three feet away from the carts to allow the automated trucks to service your carts. And we touched, we touched on it a little bit in the pre-session, but the traffic signal at the Highland Village Road and Brazos Highland Shores intersection is currently operating on a timed sequence, which explains why there are occasional longer-than-anticipated delays in backup at the light, particularly if the optocom was, we just heard the siren right then. That causes a little bit of a delay. The new signal is ready to be installed. The contractor has a notice to proceed, and it's dated January 22nd. They do have a 180-day completion. However, we don't think it'll take that long, and we will be working with the city of Lewisville Traffic Department to integrate the signal into their monitoring system so the future monitoring and maintenance can be remote. And that's all I have, other than the village report.
Hi, I'm Taylor with Experiencing Highland Village, and today I'm with Jenny McCorkle, partner of Cobalt Investment Company, and we're at Bowery Park. Well, welcome, Jenny.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
Well, tell us about Bowery Park and all the wonders of your investment and how it came to be.
Sure. Bowery Park is a community-driven mixed-use shopping center on Justin Road in Highland Village. We are the home to a number of prominent local businesses such as Awesome Times, Froyo Joe's, Sipster, Trophy Blooms, and a number of others. We have retail and office, and a bunch of new tenants coming on board soon, and are a happy, growing community here.
Well, what I love in particular, Jenny, is this mural. Tell us about the reason you added the mural and what you hope happens with it.
Sure. We want this shopping center to be the epicenter of Highland Village life, and we really wanted an interactive experience for our customers and for our tenants. So, the mural is meant to embrace the Highland Village and surrounding communities, embrace the family, and, and just all aspects of the community here.
Well, you had many choices, I'm sure, with your partners when you were looking at where to invest and what businesses to support. Why Highland Village?
You know, Highland Village is, is local to all of us, and we really love it.
Could we take a little walk around, Jenny, and maybe look at some other businesses?
Absolutely.
We get to talk to the one and only artist who created this phenomenal mural from Cobalt and Bowery Park. Welcome, Brenly.
Hi.
Well, I'm really thrilled to talk with you. You are such a creative artist.
Thank you.
How did Bowery Park and Cobalt find you?
Um, I was doing a mural one day, and they called me, and I answered the phone, and they were like, hey, we've seen you online, like, we'd love to do something with you. That's pretty much how that happened.
Wow, okay. So, we're in Bowery Park, and we're at the mural you've created. What was your vision behind this piece?
We really wanted to create a pop of color, something fun for people to look at, but also bring about some things in the community, which is why you see different schools, pop of color. We wanted it to be interactive, so we have the little megaphone down there on the left so people could take pictures with it, so just something fun.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What are you hoping people experience when they come here to Bowery Park and they see this mural?
I'm hoping that they look at it and they just think, wow, that's super cool, and it makes them happy, and it brightens their day.
How can people learn more about you?
Um, well, you can find me on my social media, tagged right down there, Brenly Ash Designs, and through my website.
Hey, okay, well, this is such a cool place at Bowery Park. Definitely a photo op for all of your Instagram, TikTok reels, everything you want to do. Come here right in Highland Village.
Yeah, thank you so much.
All right, moving on to item number nine, addressing visitor comments. Anyone wishing to address city council must complete a speaker's request form and present or return it to the city secretary. In accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, city council is restricted in discussing or taking action on items not posted on the agenda. Action on your statement can only be taken at a future meeting. In order to expedite the flow of business, we'll provide all visitors the opportunity to speak. The mayor can impose a three-minute limit. Mrs. Miller, anybody sign up to speak? All right, moving on to consent agenda. All items on consent are considered for approval by a single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda so that it can be considered separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent. Items on consent are item number 10, consider approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on December 12th, 2023. Consider resolution 2024-3107 awarding and authorizing a contract with Jago Public Company for the Highland Shores Boulevard Asphalt Overlay Project. Item number 12, consider resolution 2024-3108 authorizing negotiation and execution of a professional services agreement with Elements of Architecture Incorporated relating to review and analysis of municipal facilities. And item number 13, receive budget reports for period ending October 31st, 2023. Is there any discussion needed for any items on the, on the agenda?
We moved 15 up to consent.
Say it a little louder. Say that, say that a little louder.
We're moving item 15 into consent.
So, Mayor Pro Tem Kix Miller is, is asking to move item number 15 from action to consent. Everybody okay with that? All right, so that will include item number 15, which is consider resolution 2024-3109, appointing a member to fill a vacancy for an unexpired term on the Board of Ethics, and the name that we are going to appoint is Debbie Barber. So, it's item numbers 10, 11, 12, 13, and 15. All right, any, any further discussion needed? I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Feaster?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we approve consent agenda, items 10, 11, 12, 13, and item 15, appointing Debbie Barber to fill the vacancy.
All right, a motion by Mr. Feaster. Is anybody with a second?
I second.
A second by Ms., Ms. Hurst. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. And the motion carries 7-0. Next item on the, on the agenda, what is action there is about closed session. We did not meet in closed session, so no action needed. We've already done item 15, so item 16, late work session. Mr. Stevens?
No item needs to be discussed.
Does anybody have anything they want to discuss for future agenda? Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to request the future agenda.
Yeah, thank you so much.
All right, moving on to item number nine, addressing visitor comments. Anyone wishing to address city council must complete a speaker's request form and return it to the city secretary. In accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, city council is restricted in discussing or taking action on items not posted on the agenda. Action on your statement can only be taken at a future meeting. In order to expedite the flow of business, we'll provide all visitors the opportunity to speak. The mayor can impose a three-minute limit. Mrs. Miller, anybody sign up to speak? All right. Moving on to consent agenda. All items on consent are considered for approval by a single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda so that it can be considered separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent. Item on consent or item number 10, consider approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on December 12, 2023. Consider resolution 2024-3107, awarding and authorizing a contract with Jago Public Company for the Highland Shores Boulevard Asphalt Overlay Project. Item number 12, consider resolution 2024-3108, authorizing negotiation and execution of a professional services agreement with Elements of Architecture Incorporated relating to review and analysis of municipal facilities. And item number 13, receive budget reports for period ending October 31, 2023. Is there any discussion needed for any items on the agenda?
We moved 15 up to consent.
Say it a little louder. Say that a little louder.
We're moving item 15 into consent.
So Mayor Pro Tem Kix Miller is asking to move item number 15 from action to consent? Everybody okay with that? All right, so that will include item number 15, which is consider resolution 2024-3109, appointing a member to fill a vacancy for an unexpired term on the Board of Ethics. And the name that we are going to appoint is Debbie Barber. So item numbers 10, 11, 12, 13, and 15. All right, any further discussion needed? I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Feaster?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we approve consent agenda items 10, 11, 12, 13, and item 15, appointing Debbie Barber to fill the vacancy.
All right, a motion by Mr. Feaster. Is anybody with a second?
I second.
A second by Ms. Hurst. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. And the motion carries 7-0. Next item on the agenda, what is action? There is about closed session. We did not meet in closed session, so no action needed. We've already done item 15, so item 16, late work session. Mr. Stevens?
No item needs to be discussed.
Does anybody have anything they want to discuss for future agenda item? Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to request the future agenda item for a workshop to discuss allowing in limited locations on Highland Village Road and on the trail systems for golf carts to use so that residents in all parts of the cities can utilize these vehicles to access Doubletree Ranch, the shops at Highland Village, the marketplace shops such as Home Goods and Pet Co. and other city property that currently is not accessible by all residents by golf cart.
All right. Everybody get that? Angie?
I'll give you a pronoun.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? If not, you want to close this out? You bang the gavel and say the meeting is closed.
Meeting's closed.
At 7:18.